Okay. Okay, let me read this statement. As Chair of the Hampton Falls School Board, I find that due to the state of the emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order two zero two zero dash zero four. This public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are a providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Hampton Falls School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. In the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. Six four six eight seven six nine nine two three and webinar ID nine seven four five five two eight three nine six two or we're clicking on the following website address. This address is also listed on our agenda. This address is US zero two W E B dot Z O O M dot U S backslash J backslash nine seven four five five two eight three nine six two. B. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice of the to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the S A U twenty one office at W W W dot S A U twenty one dot org. C. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if problems occur with access. If anybody has a problem, please call six zero three nine two six eight nine nine two extension one zero three or email at R Evans at S A U twenty one dot org. Adjourned the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting should be done by a roll call vote. Let's start to start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether anyone is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Ron, can we take a roll call, please?
Greg Parrish.
President, family in and out.
Jason Ferris.
Present, family in and out.
Jill Swayze.
Present and alone.
John Bailey. And Anthony Lang. I have the roll call taken.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is public comment on the agenda items.
I do not currently see any attendees at this meeting.
We will close public comment. Next item are the minutes from January twelfth, twenty twenty one. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing no discussion, can I get a motion on these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Can I get a second? Rhonda, can we roll call, please?
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Ferris.
Yes.
Jill Swayze.
Yes.
John Bailey.
Yes.
And Anthony Lang. I have the vote recorded.
Thank you. First item under reports would be the superintendent's report. Dr. Eric Killian.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I will keep this brief tonight as we have a deliberative after this meeting. And I believe Beth's report has much more about what's going on in the school. But just one update for you tonight in that we'll be reaching out to families by the end of this week regarding instructions on how to contact Dr. Hobbs and the principal of Hampton Falls in case families would like to make a change from in person to remote or remote back into the building. So that will be by the end of this week, the change for trimester three. The first day of try three is March twenty second. So look for that letter at the end of the week. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Killian?
Thank you. Just one thing, Greg, Dr. Thank you for, um, I found your, um, your letters for extra reading and, um, and knowledge and I thought that was really nice. I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate those and I know it takes some time to put those together, so they, they we appreciate those. We've tried a few of them with the kids. Thank you.
Great. That's, that's great to hear. Thank you very much. We put those together as a team at the S A U. I have to put that out there, but thank you for that.
Great, great.
Any additional questions for Dr. Killian? Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the principal's report. Beth?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I don't have a lot to report, but I will let you know that obviously with COVID going on, we're taking it day by day. We currently have grade eight out until the end of the week because of a student testing positive, but you know, we, we know we'll get past each case in each moment, so we're taking it day by day, but inside the building, I am very happy to report that staff continue to work really hard on behalf of kids and really behalf hard on behalf of the community and helping us keep these kids in school. We know how important that is. In terms of our, you know, staff development, all of that, I, you know, John Vander Els continues to work with us on competency based education. So our goals are still very much intact. We've, we've been quiet about it, but we still continue to work on those and develop our new staff specifically this year. We have two new young staff members and John, uh, once a month works with them, uh, one on two. So, uh, we want to bring them up to snuff as we will next year and make sure that they're in alignment with, uh, all of the other goals that we have with other staff members and make sure that their Q P A's become healthy and part of the their curriculum and culture. Also, you know, student activities is something that we really want to, you know, reengage our kids with. We just can't do it yet. I have staff coming at me each week with all kinds of ideas for after school clubs and things like that, but little bit on hold until we get past this next phase of, of COVID and hopefully get staff vaccinated and kind of can loosen things up a bit, and I think that will make a gigantic difference. The rink is in motion. I sent a couple of you a little video I took of it the other day. It was the first day that kids were on it and it was, it was pretty exciting. I actually watched the first class and I watched a few take a couple headers. Thank God we have helmets. And, uh, within ten minutes, they were often skating. I, these kids amazed me, but that's just something that's fun and spirited, but I'm looking forward to this winter ending and loosening things up. So that's, that's all I have to report right now, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Does anyone have any?
Yeah. Thanks, Beth. That all sounds really good. And, you know, remote is so seamless now with them when they need to go. I miss snow days a little bit for them, but that's another conversation. I did want to ask, how many students do we currently have in the R L A? And do you have any concerns about being, if they all were to want to come back, any concerns about being able to accommodate?
No, actually, Dr. Eric Killian and I talked about that this morning. I actually have planning, been planning for that for a long time. I am, a couple of our grades, if all came back, which I don't think they will, but let's say that they all do and they're all welcome, of course, but I do, I do still have a few moves that I could make and put them into larger spaces, spaces and still protect what we have. You know, they're all welcome back. It's my hope that they all do come back and I'll just keep making moves until we make it work. But it's possible.
Great. Glad to hear it.
Thanks for asking that. Yeah, so that's, that's in March and we still, we still have a long, I think a lot's going to change between now and then anyway. I hopefully things will loosen up a bit. I know I'm optimistic.
Any additional questions for Beth?
I just want to echo what Jill said about the seamless to remote as a parent that works at home. The only difference I see is on those random times when they make the kids run to somewhere to grab something and it sounds like elephants running through the house, but I mean, it's just been, it's been so great and while I do agree like a snow day would be nice, I, I did think back to how much I disliked blizzard bags and having to manage that process and it all seemed to be a little bit more palatable after that. So, so thank you again.
Oh, thank you for saying that. And I give a lot of kudos to the entire school. We have put a lot of time and energy with staff meetings and everything else into remote learning and we knew it had to improve. We wanted it to improve and you know, the relationship with our kids is where education happens and you know, I think we have the luxury of having it done really well in person and now we're, we're doing it really well remotely. So you know, I know everybody wants a snow day, but call me on June sixteenth, we'll see, see how you feel.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Anthony, I agree with you about blizzard bags, but I do think that because we did them for as long as we did, that put us ahead of the learning curve when it came to the remote aspect of the all of this. And I think we're seeing some benefits of that, so.
Great point, Greg. You're right. And that, you know, all the remote work we've done is, is really paying off, so it's our hope we don't miss an inch.
Beth, I have one question for you, but I'm going to preface it by saying, I mean, if I catch you off guard with the question and you want to come back and circle back next month, we'll put it on the agenda. With our, the departures of our educators at the end of this year, we're going to have five new educators. Is there a plan in place for our new employees and teachers as far as bringing them up to speed with competency and getting everyone, you know, on that same page? And getting the new employees educated and brought up to speed on the, on the competency?
Uh, I can answer a little bit of that now and I'd be happy to answer it more elaborately next month, but you know.
Again, my apologies.
Yeah, I, you know, I would have been disappointed if you didn't ask a question, Greg. But, uh, you know, we, we always have plans for that. Like I just mentioned earlier, we do have two new classroom teachers this year and they're working really hard with John Vander Els to bring them up to speed with. I mean, you know, you never want to let your goals go. They're not meant to be for a year, they're meant to become part of your culture and that does take two or three years with staff, if not longer and next year, uh, our staff at Spotty where they are, um, you know, a psychologist, two classroom teachers, which as you know, uh, in the budget, uh, we will rehire one. So, you know, we'll, we'll bring them right into the fold and make sure that over a three year period, I don't expect it to be right away, but over a three year period between social emotional learning, competency based education, and then all of the other pieces that change within some state regulations, we, we, we will continue to work with them and I think it's an opportunity that we have ahead of us with new staff and that we in our school plans will make sure that we take very good care of them so that it's not just, you know, left by the wayside, of course. David, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, are you finished, Beth?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just didn't want to undersell the structural leadership that Beth put in place at, at Hampton Falls, but also across the S A U. You've got two great curriculum coordinators who are participating in our S A U wide meetings every week. They're bringing back the message on a weekly basis and have, have attacked it with, you know them with positivity and with professionalism. It's been great. The other thing structurally we have is the new teacher mentor program where we actually line up new teachers with content equivalent as equivalent as we can get to kind of give them the rules of the road and give them more therapy and just, you know, a place to ask questions when and if needed. So those structures, I wouldn't want to undersell as part of this.
And I would just add beyond that, we also have a fabulous teacher leadership team and I think that structure is, it's very important to me because you know, voices from everywhere contribute to the whole and that they all support each other. And I think additionally, what I try to do is place them geographically in the building so that you have new staff with experienced staff because we know how many conversations take place because of your location. Not just setting up a formal conversation, but those conversations in the moment, hey, can you come over and watch this class if you have a moment? I'm working hard on this and I'm unsure of it, you know, those, those types of conversations are part of the collegial conversation. That's part of the larger context. So, but thank you, David.
And it sounds like that three year timeframe is a good amount of time for them to absorb what, where we're going and what our goals are.
Well, when you think about a new teacher coming in, there's a lot to learn. You have a new culture, a new parent community, you have a larger community in Hampton Falls and then you have, you know, the politics of your school, the culture of your school that you need to be immersed in. It's a lot. And I do try with new staff, unless they're really experienced, not to overdo it with coaching or activities or this or that. I really want them to focus on the classroom and their parent connection. It's important and it takes time to really solidify it.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Beth? Thanks, Beth. Matt, finance report.
Thank you. I do want to take a moment to thank John Bailey for your service on the board. I've really enjoyed working with you. It's been a pleasure. And I've always been really impressed with your focus on really the student first decision making. So, so thank you, John. I know we've got some, some great board members in the wings, but I really appreciate your work. So thank you.
Thanks, man. I appreciate that. And I want to thank everybody here. I think the, the school board, I think the administration, the staff, everybody's done a phenomenal job here. So I'm really proud to have been a part of it and I'm going to miss you guys, but thanks.
I'd like to echo that too. I didn't know if my report was the time to do that, but John, I cannot thank you enough for your support. Your professionalism. I came into a very difficult climate and you were part of that climate committee and just really thank you for your support, your offerings to that, your professional approach to it and you were always student first and I always loved that. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
And I'm going to miss.
Beth, would you like to finish off the finance report?
I would like to hire five new teachers. Don't, don't tempt me, Matt.
So, um, so on to more interesting items, I have included the the year to date expenditure report and revenue reports on board docs. There have been no significant changes from last month. However, I also want to know, I, I also included on the onboard docs is the annual audit governance report. So this is the final budget reconciliation or audit of our financials from the independent audit firm, Plodzik and Sanderson. And they, so they have completed that process. As you recall, I did provide some preliminary results back in September and nothing has changed, but I will note there were three recommendations included in their report, of which two I had addressed at the preliminary report and a third is, was actually a new item that they, they kind of added at the end. So first two of which were the policies. So we, as you know, we, we have, we have some out of date policies that we've convened a policy committee to address and we are working through that. But we will likely be recommended to update our policies until they're up to date. So that, that is in the report as well as we did have a late deposit, bank deposit, and we, we always try to deposit, make deposits within one week. And so we did have a deposit outside of that one week period. In the final report that you, that you are recommendation that they have not, that you have not heard revolves around crowdfunding. So as you recall, back in the summer, we, we, we instituted a GoFundMe campaign to raise money for our food service program for the, um, you know, through the, the spring at the tail end of the or the beginning of the pandemic, then through the summer to offer free lunch and breakfast for our, for our students and families across the S A U. Now, by doing so, we did, we did it via crowdfunding platform, which was GoFundMe, which is really the only viable option. However, we do not have a crowdfunding policy. So they just recommend that we do institute a crowdfunding policy. So that is, that's included in the recommendations. They outline all the potential risks. I will note that, um, you know, it was done centralized with the proper controls. All funds were directed straight from the, from the education platform on, on GoFundMe to the districts directly. Actually, when I say the district, I mean, it went to the S A U account and then it was disseminated to the districts. So there were multiple points of control. There, there's no risk in this manner, but we do need to put in a place of policy. So that will be on the docket for that, for the policy committee at some point. We've got a long list of policies, but that will be added as well. Um, the final item I want to address is grant funding. So as you know, we received just over nine thousand dollars from the first stimulus package, the CARES Act, ESER funds. And then we received a second round of funding of forty three thousand dollars through the supplemental public school relief fund. That was, that was also via CARES, but it was through the state. So it came from the state indirectly. So as you know, I, I've reported that there was a third grant funding opportunity that was, that was with the second stimulus package that was passed at the end of just at the beginning of the new year. And that was that was actually about a hundred and forty million dollars that came to the state for school funding. Unfortunately, Hampton Falls will not be receiving any funds via that stimulus package. So we will not be, um, be able to, we will not be able to utilize any of those funds. So I'd be happy to answer any questions in regard to finance or the audits or the grant funding that we're not receiving.
Any questions for Matt?
Just a small one. Thanks, Matt. That's really helpful. Would fundraising in general fall under a crowdfunding policy? You know, just thinking about. Sorry. No, we have a fundraising policy?
We have a fundraising policy. We just, we just not address crowdfunding.
Okay, all right, cool.
Our, our policies are all kind of out of date. So I think it was prior to the kind of advent of you know, of, you know, GoFundMe and all these different platforms. It's just, we just need to update those.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Matt? Thanks, Matt. By the way, we're going to miss you tonight. Have fun.
Thank you. Enjoy.
Next item on the agenda, continuing business is the superintendent search update. I'm not sure who this goes to.
I can speak to it, Jason, if you want to help me out.
I'll support you, Dave. Yep.
Really not, not a lot to report. I'll keep it brief. We did have our first organization meeting, I call it, last Wednesday, the twenty seventh. Really, we went through the whole process, what it looks like, what our expectations are. We received homework, uh, which was fun in terms of defining qualities for our next permanent superintendent. And we're also looking at roles and responsibilities of the various members of our group. We do have our next meetings scheduled. The next one is on Monday, next Monday, February eighth. That's where, that's where we are.
Dave, David, what, what, what was? I know you spoke to, what was the process now of, of how the the parents and, and such are involved? Are they involved at a later date or is there like a set group of them that come in? I forget that process or was that hammered out yet?
Yeah, we, we had two conversations, one with regard to community members and parents. Ross, the consultant spoke to ways we can utilize surveys to get input, but also utilize focus groups. And, and that's really kind of where he left it, just left it open as a plan. The second one with respect to students that was important. We are working with the, when it kind of executive council to get, it's not just student council, it's going to be a, a full group of students, a representative group of students that's going to be able to speak to their desired characteristics in a superintendent. So I think that's important as well.
Yeah, it was good.
Any questions for David or Jason? David or Jason, with regards to the students, who will they actually speak to? Your committee, the board members, the entire committee?
So as part of the, the chart, he calls it the charter of the committee. We are designated, um, designating responsibilities. I assume that there's going to be a subcommittee, Greg, that we're, that's going to go and speak to the students and sort of.
And then that individual or that subcommittee would then bring that back to the full committee?
That's my assumption right now.
Okay.
Let that plays out.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions?
Just thanks for going and doing this for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
My pleasure.
Okay. Next item on the business or on the agenda is new business. Item six, these are policies first read. Caroline, does this go to you for Dr. Killian?
Yes, thank you. So these went to the policy committee and a few of them additionally went to our legal counsel as well as our nurses. That would be communicable and infectious diseases kind of relevant as well as concussions and head injuries. So those two in particular, we also had our, our unions review those two policies because they do, or more the communicable and infectious diseases because it does involve staff and the process for staff. And you can see there are a few for withdrawal because there are updated policies that take the place of those for withdrawal. Happy to answer any questions. Some of these fall under Dr. Hobbs around school safety, some under Mr. Ferreira and some under myself. So happy to review any with you. Does not require a vote tonight, just information.
Any questions for many, for anyone, from anyone? Okay, thank you. The next item is our next meeting dates. Voting Day, Tuesday, March ninth. That will take place at L A S. We have the operations committee Thursday, March eleventh at five thirty. Our next school board meeting is Tuesday, March sixteenth at six thirty. And the next joint board meeting would be Tuesday, March twenty third at six. David, regarding meetings, I have quite a quick question for you. Do you see the joint board meeting a little bit more in the coming months as you proceed through the search for the new superintendent?
I'm sorry, do I see the need for one?
Or, or more meetings as a joint board as a whole, or will we stay kind of on the schedule we kind of have?
Um, my, my understanding right now is we're, we're going to be on the schedule that we have and we'll be able to, you know, give individual board reports throughout the entire process. I would, I would defer to Jim and Dr. Eric Killian about scheduling anything additional.
Okay, okay. Does anyone have any questions so far?
Greg, just one quick point. Um, the operating committee meeting is on Thursday after the vote. So I'm assuming I should not be there. The last joint board meeting, we talked about my actually attending that, but I'm not sure that I actually can. So Jay, I know you got a lot on your plate right now, but is that something that you're ready to take on? So Jay, I know you got a lot on your plate right now, but is that something that you're ready to take on or?
This is the the operations committee. That's what you're talking about.
Correct.
Yeah, no, that's 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 fine.
I'm sorry.
Is Jay the alternate?
I believe so, yes. Is that right, Joe?
Yes. Well, we could talk about it this week, Greg, if
Yeah.
Let's let's touch base. Sure.
Yeah, if you've got, yeah, with with everything you've got on your plate, just with the superintendent search, if you can't attend that, we can figure it out between Anthony, Jill and myself. Yeah, you're welcome. And John, you're right. Yeah, after the election, yeah, you unfortunately can't participate anymore, at least at least at the table. Okay, the next item is a non-public under RC 91 dash A colon three, Roman numeral two. Did Caroline, Dr. Killian, did we anticipate getting this far this quick in the meeting? Are we going to do this after our public hearing or our deliberative session?
What I recommend is we 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 go into non-public and decide how much time we have.
Okay.
How far we can get and where you feel comfortable to have enough time to get to Winneconnet.
Okay.
Seven. I think you have a little time in there to at least accomplish part of what you want to accomplish in that meeting.
Okay, that'd be great. So David, do you need to issue new meetings or can we go into non-public since there's no participants?
Right, we have zero attendees, so Rhonda can stop the recording. We can lock the meeting and we can consider ourselves non-public.
You just gotta wait for a vote.
Can I get a motion to go into non-public?
Motion to go into non-public.
Under B, items B and C. Can I get a second?
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason Ferrius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Okay, I have that vote recorded. I'm going to stop the record. We are resuming public session. I'm just going to review that vote because that should have been done while we were recording. The motion was to close the non-public session and resume the public meeting. John Bailey made the motion and Anthony Lang seconded that and motion passed.
Now, before we go ahead and proceed forward with our public meeting, I noticed that both Caroline and Beth have left. Do they need to return for us to resume, David or Matt? No, or?
I just texted Caroline and said we're back. So she might pop into the attendees, but we can proceed.
Okay. One second here. Okay, currently under item nine, we have the principal's contract addendum. Can I get a motion?
Yes, I'll happily make a motion that we offer Principal Rossy an extension for our contract as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Can we take a roll call vote, Rhonda?
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason Ferrius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
And Anthony Lang?
Yes.
That vote is recorded.
Well done, Greg. Thanks for that.
Thank you, everyone. Anthony, I would like to you know, we maybe we can ask Beth what the upside is. I know that Dr. Killian answered that and I thought her answer was great. But if you wanted to proceed forward with Beth to see what the upside for her is, I'd love to hear the answer.
Yeah, I think in our in our general conversations, like I I think she has a lot to gain from it. Who wouldn't being with these kids every day, but you know, I definitely want to, you know, talk to her more and develop that relationship further.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the next item on our meeting is to adjourn. Now, back to Rhonda, Matt or David. Do we adjourn or do we recess in case we need to come back?
The recess and then so you'll bring your Chromebooks or your laptop to deliberative. And then at the close of the deliberative, you'll just log back onto this Zoom call. And if there are any changes made to the budget, they'll they'll provide you the opportunity to revote. And if not, then you'll just adjourn.
Do we have to resume the Zoom?
Yeah, I mean, you should, but it wouldn't be the end of the world if you just do it in person. So.
Okay, I don't mind returning to Zoom. It actually kind of makes some sense since the entire meeting is Zoom anyway. So, okay.
Can I just, I think if if there's no changes made, I don't see a problem with just adjourning the meeting then, once you resume. If there's going to be changes, somebody shoot me a text. That way I can open up the Zoom again and pull it back up. That way you have the recording of the changes.
We won't make Rhonda get up if there's no changes.
You mean, Rhonda, you're not joining us?
No, that's the school district clerk that does that.
Wonderful.
Different from the recording secretary.
Okay.
Night to be over with.
Okay, that being said, can I get a motion to to go into recess?
Yeah, before we go into recess, just real quick, I just want to thank Matt and Rhonda personally, just because I'm not going to see you later tonight. Matt, I thought you were actually going to be there, but I guess not. But I want to thank you both. You've both been amazing to work with. I think the SE is very lucky to have you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Can I get a motion to recess?
I'll make a motion to recess.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Can we do a roll call?
Yes. Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
And Jason Ferrius?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is recessed at 6:21.
Okay, see you all soon.
Before we leave, Matt, Matt or David again, or Rhonda, are we meeting with counsel and the moderator prior to the meeting? And if so, do you know what time that is?
Yeah, so they, if you just arrive, really, you only need to be there five or 10 minutes prior to there's, everyone know, everyone's familiar with the process. So it's essentially the moderator will will open. So that's JP Pontrand. He'll read the warrant article. He will and then provide allow the board to make a comment if you'd like. So if you'd like to make a comment, Greg, or or we we could, Caroline and I would be willing to make a few comments. Otherwise, it would just open it up to the public. The I imagine there's going to be a huge crowd and then and then you'll votes and to 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 close to to close it and that's that's it. And you've got the operating budget and the three expendable trust warrant articles. So you know, we were trying to make this quick. So last night, we had the Seabrook deliberative session in under 10 minutes. So I anticipate a similar, unless there's a lot of people there that do ask questions, in which case that could take some time. So.
Procedurally, Matt, do we have to go on record that we've met with the moderator and attorney Kazasa? Because in the past, it's been on our agendas. Or can we just, for lack of a better word, wing it?
No, there's there's no, there's no requirement to me with that. There that's purely just for you, for everyone to get on the same page.
Okay.
Caroline will have the the warrants motion, like the the actual warrant articles that that JP will be reading. So she'll give a copy to each of you. And if you want to decide who makes the motion beforehand, you can, or it can just be any of you. So it doesn't matter. So.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Matt on this?
Matt, in the event of a dire emergency, will you be available via phone?
Of course.
Repeat after me. Happy to get any questions to Mr. Ferrera and we'll email the people after the meeting.
Spoken like a professional.
I feel like anyone that has a question kind of knows how to get ahold of you from previous experiences.
Tell you that a half a dozen folks that'll have questions.
Matt, we're going to miss you.
And I will, I will, I'll miss you and all the
Us personally, yes. The event, not so much.
If there's nothing else, if if there's nothing else, we'll see everybody in a few minutes when it kind of.
Very good. Thanks.
Thanks, man.